I forget I've been permanently subjected to this. So we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. If you will, please stand for the prayer and pledge.
Our Father, God in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. Give us our trespasses, and we forgive those who trespass against us. He is not in temptation, but deliver us from evil. Thine is the kingdom, power, and the glory forever. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which is stand one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Forward.
Here.
Ethel Lee.
Here.
Franklin.
Here.
Crockett. St. Columbia.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Five present, one absent.
We do have a quorum. And your minister, I'm sorry, your agenda should be in front of you at this point. And I believe the clerk, the mayor, is not here tonight. And my understanding is that he's not going to be here. But the clerk has something that she wants to read into the record before we get started. Madam Clerk, you have it.
This is from Mayor Kevin Smith. It says, per my agreement with the city council and Verna Boyd, I am meeting with the King Biscuit Blues Festival's security staff at 6:00 PM tonight instead of 5:00 AM tomorrow. I will be unable to make tonight's city council meeting. Please see the letter that I have had, am having hand-delivered to the meeting. He said, please publicly explain. Especially since it is per my promise to the city council that I would be there in person to guarantee placement of barriers is as agreed. Mayor Kevin Smith.
There was some discussion about it at the time that the Blues Festival permit was approved. Madam Clerk, I believe this is the letter for which.
Yes.
He speaks, the one that I'm holding in my hand. We have several items on the agenda. But I will read the letter that has been placed before us into the record. And then if there's any discussion to take place after that, we'll certainly do that. This is a letter from Mayor Kevin Smith, addressed to Roger Norman, Arkansas Legislative Auditor, and Todd Murray, First District Attorney. It's dated October 4th, 2022. It says, Mr. Murray and Mr. Norman, I am formally requesting a criminal investigation and a special audit into the offices and financial irregularities of the city treasurer. Specifically, I'm requesting the investigation per Arkansas Code, Section 1477-103 pertaining to the questionable irregularities that include, but are not limited to, misappropriation of ARPA funds, unpaid payroll taxes, mismanagement of funds, lack of payment to vendors and utility providers, failure to provide accurate monthly financial reports. Thank you for your timely and prompt investigation of this important matter. Respectfully, Kevin A. Smith, Mayor of Helena, West Helena. And again, that is dated for today, October 4th, 2022. The treasurer, Mr. Derek Turner, he has here a present. I'll give you an opportunity to respond if you so like. Mr. St. Columbia, if you would, I want to allow the treasurer, since it's directed at the treasurer, by him to respond first, and then anyone else who wants to chime in may do so.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ethel Lee. The first thing I would like to say is that I think the claims are unfounded for the most part. And I think that whatever irregularities that he's talking about probably shouldn't be directed at me. There are other factors. But, and I'm thinking that this has something to do with, I guess, retaliation for my sending the city council an email regarding the unauthorized redemption of a water department CD and the amount of $122,000. The, per a resolution by the city council, I think it's Resolution 2-2022. The resolution requires, matter of fact, let me, let me pull it up right there. In Section 2 of the resolution, it says, all checks, drafts, and other negotiable instruments shall require two of the five authorized signatories, signature for execution. To my knowledge, the, we didn't have one signature, to my knowledge, for the execution of the redemption of this CD. If you look at the email that I sent you, I also questioned why the mayor requested. I sent to you a letter of the request for redemption of the CD. And they, he's directed them to enter it into the straight, into the checking account. He gave the account number and the routing number. And in my opinion, I talked to the bank and I asked them, why did they issue? Well, first of all, I don't think that they expected a check to be issued. He's requesting them to send it directly into the checking account. And so for whatever reason, they sent a check. I acquired possession of the check. And so I would not let the water department deposit the check into their account because I felt that the redemption was unauthorized. Just per the resolution, the resolution says we need two signatures to execute any negotiable instruments, which a CD would be. And so the point of me holding the CD was just for, so the city council could authorize the redemption of the CD. So I'm guessing that this letter to Todd Murray and to Roger Norman is in response to that information that I provided to the city council. Now, I think a lot of this stuff came about because of the late payment for the payroll taxes, right? That was a big, this big deal. But I sent you guys a report soon afterwards explaining why the city was unable to pay the payroll taxes in a timely manner. And in that report, I also compared it to, in 2018, we had a 2018 audit finding that discussed overspending as being one of the primary causes that the auditors were concerned about a going concern for the city of Helena, West Helena. They had more to do with overspending. And the overspending resulted in our inability to pay vendors in a timely manner. One of the things that they discussed in that 2018 audit was late payroll taxes. I think at that time, they were late to the tune of $120,000, I believe. And we had, I think, unpaid payables of around approximately $200,000. I'm kind of going off the top of my head, it's a lot of information. And so I sent you the report saying that we were in the same, we're going to be in the same position because we're doing the same things. And we are overspending. And I sent you the regulations, the state regulations that dictate who has responsibility for spending. And that regulation, I think it's Arkansas Annotated Code.
1458-303.
What's that, Mr.?
1458-303.
1458-303. And I'll read that regulation to you. It states that, and this is what I put in your report. It says, in a city of the first class, city of the second class, or incorporated town, the mayor or the mayor's duly authorized representative shall have exclusive power and responsibility to make all purchases of supplies, apparatus, equipment, materials, and other things requisite for public purposes in and for the city, and to make all necessary contracts for work or labor to be done or material or other things need or necessary things to be furnished for the benefit of the city or in carrying out any work or undertaking of a public nature in the city. So this statute dictates that the mayor will have exclusive purchasing authority, power and authority, responsibility.
Let's turn, I interrupt you for just a second. Now, I'm gonna yield back to Mr. Turner, but one of the things, the city town, I want to emphasize on that. This is why the city council has been jumping up and down about the $5,000 spending limit. The city council, the mayor has the exclusive right. Nobody in this city can make any purchase or any agreement but the mayor. If I, City of Turner, want to order a pen, I have to go through the mayor's office. If I need an academic to fix, whether anything done, the mayor's the only person that can fix. So he's the only person that can write and say, and even if the city clerk, city treasurer, department head tried to do a check or anything, the mayor still has to approve it before it's paid. That's why, if you all remember, when the city council voted to settle the lawsuit and he refused to pay so, the mayor refused to pay, no payment was issued because he has that exclusive right. Now, where we are, I'm gonna go back to Mr. Turner, but where we are at last meeting, Mr. Turner and Ms. Ramsey told you all on the record that the mayor's office currently has over $300,000 in unpaid bills that are sitting in the city clerk's office where he went and did the authorizations. And his department heads, and he is going out spending the money. And just to remind you all, where we were before, when he denied, Mr. Franklin brought up last meeting, when the mayor denied settling the lawsuit, he said he couldn't sell it because at that time, he was aware that there were unpaid taxes. But the spending has not curbed. Spending is steadily going on. And with that, I will yield back to Mr. Turner to finish his presentation. But I wanted to make it clear that the council's in charge of all of the money. How the money is spent, when it's spent, is exclusively the mayor's job. What to spend it on, exclusively the mayor's job. The mayor is the person that does all the expenditures and is supposed to check with the city clerk and city treasurer before he spends a dime to make sure that we do it. Well, later I will go through the purchase order, go through that. But I yield back to Mr. Turner.
Okay, thank you. And so part of the report, the first part of the report is to give the city council, inform the city council of what each officer's responsibility is. So the mayor is responsible for spending, making purchases. The city clerk is responsible for making payments. She processes the payments from approved purchase orders. And so she makes the payments for the purchases. My responsibility as the city treasurer is to report to you, the city council, the payments that were made. I give you a report of revenues and expenditures. So I'm reporting you, reporting to you the revenues that I receive in tax dollars, franchise fees, and so forth, and the expenditures that we make. So the mayor spends, she pays, he purchases, she pays for the purchases. I report to you the amount of the purchases. That's basically what it is. The city council sets the limit on the mayor's purchasing ability. So they set the limit to how much the mayor can purchase. So that's everybody's authority or responsibilities financially in a nutshell, right? And so I go on to show you how that this overspending affects city operations financially. And so I sent you a chart showing the expenditures from January through July for the past four years. And so from January through July in 2019, and these expenditures do not include payroll expenses. Because last year, over the last couple of years, the city council has approved cost of living adjustment increases to city employees. So we expected that the payroll expense was going to increase by 3% and 4% because this is what the city council approved in COLA increases for the employees. So I didn't include that because it was expected and it was taken into account with the revenue projections. So I did not include those numbers, payroll and benefits in these expenditure numbers. So in 2019, January through July 2019, we had $593,954 in expenditures. And that same period in July, in 2020, there were $652,608 in expenditures. In 2021, which was last year, we had $731,493. And this year, from January through July, we had $1.1 million. And so that was an increase from last year during the same period of approximately $300,000. And that's included the actual expenditures. We're not including the $300,000 in unpaid bills. These are the paid bills. So that would jump to about $600,000. And so if you have $600,000 in expenditures and your cash flow, well, this is, well, this, no, this is. And we had cash flow of $500,000. We were $400,000 short in being able to pay, what, 303 million, 3.3 million, 3.4 million? So we were $400,000 short in being able to pay all of the expenditures that we had. We actually pay the street fund and the landfill funds. Payroll is paid through general funds. And so, and we expect them to pay us back. But if there's overspending in the street fund and landfill fund, they can't reimburse us. So that adds to the stress on our cash flow. So we have overspending in the general fund. Street fund and landfill is putting pressure on general fund cash flows. And then us not getting our revenues from the sanitation department in a timely manner places additional strain on those cash flows. And so when you have that situation, you're going to have late payments to vendors. You're going to have late payments to IRS and Department of Finance Administration. And these things can't be avoided because we can't, we don't have enough cash on hand to pay for all of the expenditures, well, all of the expenses that we accrue, incurring, I mean.
Mr. Turner, well, you got your thoughts, I need to interrupt you. And the reason I need to interrupt Mr. Turner, the city treasurer, is he's dancing around the issue that's the heart of this, that I've been talking to the city council for a while. We have a purchase order ordinance and ordinance that you all have on the desk. The practical issue with this is the mayor has exclusive duty, exclusive obligation, exclusive authority to make all the expenditures. The city council has limited that in two ways. You can only spend up to $5,000 without your approval, and you must follow purchase order procedure. We shouldn't even be having this discussion because, one, the Constitution of State of Arkansas said we cannot engage in deficit spending. And what's been happening is there's been deficit spending. The fact that there exists $300,000 in unpaid bills is evidence that there's deficit spending. And the only person that could spend money is the mayor's office. Second thing relating to that. Prior to any purchase being made, our ordinance is very specific, specific, specific about what it provides. It says, in all instances requiring payment, the city treasurer shall be provided with advance noting in writing of the expense or the intended expense. Has that been happening, Mr. Turner?
No, sir.
Okay, so before the mayor spends money, he's supposed to check with the city treasurer to see if we have the money. Before he obligates the city on any finance, he's supposed to contact the city treasurer and say, the treasurer, do we have the money? Let's read what the ordinance says. I'm reading from ordinance number 24-2006. It's an ordinance establishing the purchase order procedure. What it says in pertinent part, it says, the purpose of the purchase request is to allow the mayor, the city clerk, and the city treasurer to approve all the expenses prior to the commitment of city resources. When completing a purchase order request or requisition, the following guidelines should be followed. Prepare the purchase order or requisition as soon as the purchase order is identified. The purchase order request must, shall be equal to the final cost. Is there any deviation, said deviation must be approved by the mayor on a supplemental purchase order with an explanation of the difference. The purchase request amount can cover expenditures over several months. However, the period of time covered shall not exceed the current fiscal year. And it goes on, this ordinance is three pages, I'm not going to read all three pages. However, the issue with it is that before a dime is spent by the mayor's office, he's supposed to check with the city treasurer specifically, and that's supposed to be a discussion. Do we have the funds to make this payment? Can I do this? Do we have the money? And that's where the breakdown is happening because when the city clerk and the city treasurer give the things, they're having discussions, how can we pay for it? For the record, last meeting, when you all asked about the $86,000 that was obligated relating to diesel fuel, y'all asked the question, can we pay it? Who has the money? And both of them, now that they're both sitting there, they can correct me from all, both of them said that we have $300,000 worth of bills, what do you want to put this in order? Is that an accurate reflection of last month's meeting, last meeting? Yes. Okay, and so what is happening over and over and over again is the city's being obligated to payment of things before he checks with the city treasurer or the city clerk. And the evidence is, the city clerk's desk, it's $300,000 unpaid bills. Now, if you're spending more than you have, then you cannot pay your bills. And this issue has been discussed by you all over and over and over again. And this is part of the reason why this body continues to discuss the $5,000 limit. That's been known by the mayor's office. The purchase order has been in place since February 21st, 2006, assigned by then-mayor James Jeff Vala and city clerk Sandy Ramsey. The detail, it goes in detail as to what's supposed to happen. And all contracts, regardless of whether verbal or not, are supposed to be reflected in a purchase order. Because the idea is, do not obligate the city without, without there being available to do so. And also on the desk, you have ordinance number 10-2009, which provides the purchase power of the mayor. The purchase power, I've discussed it many times, and I reviewed the ordinance today, and I reviewed also 14, because above that $5,000, the city council does have the option to disapprove in its, above the amount that the mayor's spending. Part of the practical issue that is here, I don't know if the city council has full information as to what is the outstanding indebtedness or the $300,000 because every day, there's obligations that are being made. Every day, you hear that the clerk goes through a long list every meeting talking about these obligations, but what all the obligations are, and we'll be in that. Now, here's the part about the purchase order that I also want you to understand. The mayor has not consulted me about purchase orders. And order contracts, what it says, Section 6, a purchase order request, it require for all contract with, the covenant contract must be attached to finalize the purchase order request forwarded to the city treasurer office. All contracts shall be reviewed and approved by the city attorney. I don't have any contracts. I yield Mr. Turner.
So to continue, the third part of my report to you, the purchase order procedure. Like the valley said, the purpose of it is to let him know beforehand, to ask, and it says to ask, you have to get approval from the city clerk or the city treasurer. The reason you need approval from clerk is so that she can tell you we have the money to pay it. You get approval from me to let him know if we have the appropriations, if the city council had the appropriations, they approved that item appropriations, or we have already exceeded appropriations, we don't have enough appropriations to cover it. But we don't get purchase orders, the city clerk doesn't get, you know, maybe two weeks later, after, this is after the item has been purchased, consumed, used, the battery is on there, the gas has been used up. And so they don't bring, even if, even when we don't approve them or have knowledge of them beforehand, they're still not brought to us a timely manner. And so we just get them whenever they remember to bring them over. And so we, Earth in particular, has to kind of figure out which ones, I have so much money, so which ones do I, which one of these purchase orders do we pay? And so we don't get the purchase orders before the actual purchase is made. And so that was part three of my report to the city council. And so it's making it difficult for us to manage payment of the city's expenses. Now, to go beyond that, I tend to address the letter. I think that this letter was sent to Todd Murray and Roger Norman. And I think this is simply in retaliation to the letter and to the report that I sent to the council addressing why we were unable to pay the payroll in a timely manner. And also the email that I sent to the city council today because it comes after mail to you guys regarding the unauthorized redemption of the CD. I received a letter, I received an email from the mayor a few months before the meeting. It had, he had forwarded to me, and it came from Ms. Precious Jackson with First State Bank in Long Oak, saying that she had tried to get in touch with me about an additional signature for the redemption of the CD. I have been in my office every day since September, since the September 20th meeting. And we discussed the Jordan's bill, I've been there every day. I have not, the mayor has not come down to my office to discuss this with me. He has not given me, he has not called me about the redemption of the CD. The email said, the email was dated today, it was forwarded to me today. And my response to the mayor was that even if she had contacted me about a second signature, I would not have signed to authorize the redemption of the CD because it had not been authorized by the city council. So even if she had tried to get in touch with me, which I doubt, there's no evidence that she has tried to get in touch with me, I would not have signed the redemption, where I would not have signed the approval to have the CD redeemed without city council approval. And even if you couldn't get in touch with me, the city clerk has, the city clerk can sign. So if you couldn't get in touch with me, why didn't you try to get in touch with the city clerk? And so, and I doubt, I'm not sure if she would have signed it or not. But I don't think he got in touch with me, she didn't, I know she didn't get in touch with me. And so I don't think she tried to get in touch with the city clerk. So I think all of this is in response to the, him redeeming the CD without authorization. Had something to do with the payroll taxes, which he knew about. Obviously, he knew about it because he discussed it in a city council meeting before. And I also believe that I have had discussions with you guys about the, this unauthorized financing of the excavator. Not, not to discuss whether there was an ordinance approving the purchase of the excavator, which could be questioned. But there definitely was not a ordinance or approval by the city council for the financing of the excavator. And so we have an excavator in which we don't have city council approval for the financing of this. of this excavator, and he has made over two thousand dollars in paying of principal interest, which has not been authorized by the city council either, in payment towards the, uh, financing of this excavator. So I think all, I think this letter to Todd Murray and Roger Norman is in response to me letting the city council, what's going on with the city's finances.
And Mister, Mister Valley, people pause, what, what I want to do is I wanted to give, uh, Mr. Turner an opportunity to respond to the letter. Um, as you all know, I'm time limited tonight, so I want to give the council an opportunity to, to comment. And we have guests here who need to make presentations, so I want to be able to get to those people. And Mr. St. Columbia wanted to take a comment. I'll start on his side. We'll go around the room. I do want to make note for the record that the time is six forty-five P M. Uh, that at six thirty-nine P M, Ms. Verna Boyd entered the room, and that is the individual that the mayor was supposed to be meeting with. And so if he's gonna attend the meeting, um, he's completed his meeting at this point, so I want the record to reflect that. Uh, Mr. St. Columbia, you may, you may have the floor.
Very much.
Okay, you should have one at, at your table.
I didn't see it earlier.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mister Franklin, you have the floor.
Yes, I have the check. I, I took possession of the check. And in my email, I also told you guys per state that you, which, uh, gives me responsibility for the maintenance of the records I have taken possession of, the CDs that were, uh, the record of the CDs that were held in the water, uh, salt. So I have possession of those, uh, records, those documents. And, uh, and the reason I took possession of those documents, which I am statutefully, uh, have the responsibility for, was to prevent the mayor from, uh, attempting to redeem any, any other fees.
Uh, little criminal investigation on the mayor for the excavator and for this, uh, CD that he went ahead and, uh, did without our approval. So we need to see if they can investigate him, Mr. City Attorney. The council, I would like for you all to go with me on that, to have him, uh, the excavator, uh, misappropriated funds and us being in a deficit uh, with his spending, with his spending. Uh, you know, we, I, I have here purchase orders. I have over, uh, three hundred thousand dollars worth of bills right here that we have spent. That's as part of payroll taxes that we couldn't pay. Another thing is, right, this, what we got with, with the jail bill, we have to take our youth to Danville, Arkansas. That's why we incur no jail around here. We take our women and young folks. So these folks getting their houses broken, we can't pay cross counter, we can't pay nobody. We have not paid nobody. Are we all aware of that? We can, we can't pay nobody? We all aware of that? Is that part of your three hundred thousand dollar debt? See, the citizens need to be aware that we have somebody who's loosely spending their tax dollars. When somebody break in these young folks' houses, they got anchor month is on, they know ain't nothing gonna be done to them, cuz you ain't got nowhere to take them. Say it with me, you ain't got nowhere to take them, because you wanna pay five thousand dollars here to call hard, whoever the guy is. You wanna pay your friends to cut the levy. You wanna use the CD as your personal bank account. That's what we have here. So I, I am only one vote, but we need to take some action against the mayor.
And not to, I know, uh, Mr. Ethel said we have guests here. It, it was just something that came to mind, uh, with regard to the CD as well, uh, with this Xylem bill that we owe three hundred thousand dollars. But we paid it, but I don't know if you recall a few months ago that the office manager in the water department wanted to cash the CD to pay, and Xylem only wanted fifty thousand dollars at the time. And so, but she wasn't allowed to cash the CD to, to pay fifty thousand dollars. So that's, that's why I, I sent the email that I said in my email that it was, I, I, I think it was just a, a disregard, a disdain for state law, uh, the municipal code and policy procedures of the city.
So, so can we get a letter?
Well, well, Mister Franklin, if we can come back to that, I, I have, I have, I have a thought on it. If we can come back to, are there any other comments from the body?
Status of that E-check payment, how much was it for? Can you remind me?
Which one? Oh, I, I know, well, we, when you say E-check payment, I don't, we make E-check payments all the time. You mean the unauthorized E-check payment? It was nineteen, well, the total, the, the most recent one was a price to a nineteen hundred eighty dollars. I think it's one thousand nine hundred eighty-four dollars.
Oh, so what do they total?
The total payments have been twelve thousand two hundred four dollars and sixty-nine cents. That's principal interest and late fees.
Are those payments deemed legal?
No, there was no authorization from the, the city council told him, don't pay it. Yeah, y'all said, don't pay it. He paid it. Uh, and he, he doesn't, we don't write checks for it. He has gone into.
They don't require the signatures. Is that correct?
I don't know how he's paying it. He's paying it by, it's my understanding, he's paying it somehow by, by electronic form. Neither the city clerk nor the city treasurer agreed to pay it. Is that correct, Miss, Madam Clerk?
That's correct.
Is that correct, Mr. Treasurer?
Yes, once the city council, that day when the city council said that they weren't gonna pay it, I, I didn't.
On that issue, and I, I, I'll, I'll try to get off the subject, on that issue, amendment seven and eight, it's clear that there must be a written instrument approved. City council has not approved the contract. I have not given a legal opinion on it. If you recall, he signed as legal city representative, representative, uh, to obligate the city allegedly. And, uh, he also has made payments knowing that there's zero appropriation. City clerk and city treasurer's told him several times this year that there was zero appropriation. Is that correct, Ms. Ramsey?
Yes.
Is that correct, Mr. Treasurer?
Yes.
Okay, so i- if, if that closes off the discussion, I do want to close it off so we can move on to the other items on the agenda. Um, Mister Franklin, are you, are you, uh, suggesting that, that we, uh, attach a copy of these minutes to the letter that has been provided to us and ask that the appropriate, uh, uh, agencies or individuals who this is addressed to also include, uh, the mayor in their investigation into the items that are so noted and listed in the letter?
Yes, sir.
Is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Is there a second? Motion by Franklin, second by Davis. Do you need the motion restated? Motion is going to be to attach a copy of this, uh, this evening's minutes to the letter from the mayor dated October fourth, twenty twenty-two, in address to Roger Norman and Todd Murray, uh, whereby the minutes would, uh, reflect the vote, which has yet to take in place. But if it's so, uh, if it's so gets approved, that it would attach a copy of those minutes requesting that the mayor also be included in the investigation that he has requested of the treasurer. I hope that's not too complicated. And as you get it written down, is the discussion?
Franklin?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Etherly?
Yes.
Ford?
Yeah.
Crockett? St. Columbia? Yep, Ford, yes. One absent, one no.
Motion passes. Uh, let's move on to the next item on the agenda. We have an event permit, um, for the Nolan reunion. Is Janice Welton present? This Welton can come to the podium here to the microphone and make your presentation.
Hello.
Good evening.
Well, this is for our family reunion, and we have it every year, but we didn't have it for the years like this here, cuz we wanted to block off a street. Cuz we have so many kids, and we wanna keep them protected from getting hit by any cars or anything. So basically, we, uh, asking for your permission to close the street.
In pertinent part, this is sometime, this is October the eighth, ending is October the tenth. It's a block party. Are you actually all three days that the road be blocked off?
Well, it's really just two. Because the third day will be the last day that we have it, so most of us will be packing up, leaving and everything. Well, mostly it'd be like around about, I guess it's not like twelve and ten.
To be dark.
Mm-hmm.
Now, your, your request does not say which block. It says a location in one forty-five South Fernando. So what portion are you actually to be blocked off? From what corner to what corner?
Well, it's gonna be the straight street, Hernando Street.
No, no, what I'm saying, to Hernando Street, you were saying the entirety of Hernando Street, or you're saying?
No, just the corner from the front corner, from the front to
What I'm asking specifically, from what intersection to what intersection is what I'm asking?
Yeah.
Flavon to Ladino.
Yes, sir.
You asking the, the street be blocked for two days, is that right?
Yes, sir.
October the eighth, October the ninth.
And the ten, it don't really have to be blocked up because we all will just be in the yard, getting our stuff together, getting ready to leave or whatever.
Have you made plan for your neighbor to have access to their homes, ingress and egress? They get to it from the house?
Will you make them aware that, uh, during that time they may, well, you, you said that they will be able to get in and out, right?
Yes, ma'am.
If there's nothing else, from them, the city attorney, I move.
The record we were discussing, where, where Zach was discussing, uh, Ladino to, to, uh, Flavon, this one block, uh, is near the area of, Fernando is located near the area of the former Tropicana Restaurant.
Yes.
So if you came across in the boys and girls club, you'd make a left, and it's, that's the block we're talking about. Not, not short to Soto, Fernando, the next one.
The next, okay.
So you'd be tied behind where the barber shop used to be.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I know what it is. Any comments, questions?
Let me see, for, uh, the Nolan family reunion on October eighth, uh, she said it's gonna be like two days, so one to ten, well, just move it, approve or approve it.
Motion by Franklin, second by Davis to approve the permit as presented by the, for the Nolan reunion. Um, any other discussion, any further discussion? If there be none, Madam Clerk, would you call the role?
St. Columbia?
Yeah.
Franklin?
Yes.
Etherly?
Yes.
Davis? Ford?
Yes.
Five, yes.
Permit is approved. Motion passes. Uh, next on, item on the agenda, we have a resolution regarding Delta Dirt Distillery Tax Back Program. And it says Mayor Smith will present. He is not here. I don't know if this is, uh, this item is time limited or not.
I, I, I don't like, my, my items, we can have another meeting. We can table my items. Uh, cuz it's, it, we got some stuff that we should talk, the city finances are important to me, so I, whatever I have, uh, oh, cuz Ms. Boyd is here, uh, I can have a, Madam Clerk, we can have a meeting next to, if, if everybody can be here, that, that's possible. We need to really go in depth about these finances. I, we can table whatever I got to the, to, we can have just a regular, another regular scheduled meeting next week, if everybody's able to attend. But, you know, I know everybody's time limit, but we really need to discuss these finances and what we just got here with this volunteer tonight.
Okay, so when we, uh, when we arrive at Mister, at the items as suggested by Mister Franklin, we will carry those over until the next meeting agenda. Uh, what we have immediately in front of us is a resolution regarding Delta Dirt Distillery, and it says it will be presented by the mayor. I don't know what his presentation was gonna be. And I don't know if this is time sensitive or not. Does anybody have information on the Delta Dirt Distillery item? So, Madam Clerk, if you will place that item on the, on the net, well, we'll pass it, and then you can do with it whatever the mayor wants to do with it, whenever he wants to present it. He can, uh, make that information known, and you can make his presentation when he's ready to make the presentation, and we'll be available. That may be the best way for us to go forward. Next, we have the conflict ordinance, um, to be presented by the city attorney, and if I'm not mistaken, this is the one that we've, um, it's been, it's already been presented. There's, there's just been no action taken on it.
Y'all can put it in, any point to make it effective in January, so if you all don't wanna test this night, that's fine, too.
Any interest in addressing the, the, the conflict, uh, ordinance tonight? My personal interest has always been to make it effective in January, because I don't necessarily agree with the, some things that are being used against by the city, against the city at this point. Uh, but we can, uh, we can pass that, and Madam Clerk, if you would just place it on the agenda. Next, we have a resolution authorizing the mayor to apply for CDBG funds. And there appears to be a resolution that follows that to authorize the city to enter into a contract for East Arkansas Planning and Development District to administer CDBG funds to, uh, renovate the West Tana Library at seven twenty-one Plaza and for the establishment of a children's safety center. Uh, these items, I assume would have been presented by the mayor. Is there anyone else who would like to, um, address or make presentation? If not, Madam Clerk, uh, at the direction of the mayor, these may, you can place these back on the next agenda or whichever agenda he intends to make the presentation.
Let me pause. Y'all keep loosely saying next agenda. Mister Franklin said he may ask the council to call a special call meeting next Tuesday. Are you saying the next regular agenda, or you all saying the special call agenda?
My reference is to the next regular meeting agenda, and if a special meeting is so-called, then the agenda would be set at the time that meeting is called. Uh, next item is Mister Franklin's will be passed until the next agenda. Yes.
I, I, this one right here, uh, dated to about Jarvis Smith, I just want the council to hear about this as a financial issue. We don't have to do anything. I just want them to be aware of, this is the kind of spending that we've been talking about. And in the letter, uh, Madam Clerk, would you read this, uh, invoice and li- listen to how it's read and worded? That's one of the issues we want the city, the citizens to see how their tax dollars are being spent.
Going to invoice, does that, does that have a purchase order attached to it?
No, sir. It ha- has no purchase order. It has nothing attached to it. It is from your, uh, human resource department. And, uh, I give this, Miss Ramsey, cuz I, I want, I want to see, this is some of the issue that we're talking about that are happening constantly in this city. Your human resource officer has decided to make a purchase for, well, actually, this, let Miss Ramsey, Miss Ramsey be there to, and see, let's see how good this is.
Okay, it's, uh, it states, I will, this is from, uh, Pro Tree Service to the city of Helena regarding six thirty-one Kentucky. Uh, it's, uh, from the owner of Pro Tree Service. I will cut limbs that are already broke in a tree on the ditch that belong to the city of Helena, West Helena, and cut the limb that broke out of the same tree and lodged into a tree that belongs to a resident that lives at six thirty-one Kentucky Street. I will haul off everything that I cut per my agreement with Jarvis Smith, representative for the city of Helena, West Helena. The amount of the invoice is twenty-four hundred dollars.
What land?
I don't know.
But, that's. We, how do your human resource person direct somebody to go cut some trees down? And tell him to haul them up? Now, another thing is, the person has not been paid because. They said go back, they want him to, he's done the work, but they want him to go back and clear up everything. This is something that, you know, it's election time, and I think our mayor would do whatever it takes. To, to get elected and cut whatever and do whatever, hire whoever, pay whoever, use, use one of the, one of these. When I own workers out here to do this right here, and I.
This, now the purchase order, that's the first thing. Mr. Turner has not signed it, I have not reviewed it, it is a contract, and. According to this purported invoice, it shows a notice of intent to file mechanic's man, materials man lien for work performed. I'm not aware that the city owns the six thirty-one Kentucky Street. But it says, please take notice that we intend to file a ma- materials man's lien on the property located six thirty-one Kentucky. But work performed next to it, an incidental to it. This work performed, the request and direction of city Helena, West Helena, acting through the office of the mayor. Reverend Jarvis Smith of Community Liaison to the mayor, Kevin Smith, approve the work order, supervise the work. The work performed was listed in invoice submitted to the city, which has not been paid. The amount was due is two thousand four hundred dollars, limbs were broken falling from the tree in a ditch. Was maintained by the city onto trees in the yard of six thirty-one Kentucky. Should the invoice be not be paid by September thirty, we will take more aggressive. Actions to collect the work performed, respect submitted, Robert Bailey, Pro Tree Service, September twenty-six to two thousand twenty-two.
Different titles and stuff, are they interchangeable, or what representative, community liaison, human?
There is no position. Or community liaison within your base pay ordinance. Your base pay ordinance, the city's base pay ordinance establishes every position in the city. There's currently, I won't elongate discussion on this, we're currently being sued by a city employee relating to. Proposed employee Jarvis Smith. Relating to the Human Resource Office. We were sued in federal court relating to an alleged discrimination for her not receiving the job. And that Mr. Smith is the Human Resource Office, the side of the building. Stays that he's the Human Resource Office. There is no, nothing in our base pay, nothing in our budget for community liaison. I will limit my discussion further because of pending lawsuit. Yes, ma'am.
It's questionable about what this. It's city attorney, I know our time limit, but since we don't have a, since his title is human resource. We can amend, we can amend and zero this title out in the base pay ordinance, right? We can just zero, zero this out. Because I mean, we, we don't know what he does, and if he's human resource, I, I, that's my next thing, let's, let's zero the position out.
There's no authority to pay anybody for something that is not both in the base pay and the budget.
Okay, so I, I moved to zero that human resource position to zero dollars until we can find out what his title is. I move to zero the human resource position out until we can find out what his job title, we.
Can we put that on the next agenda so we can?
Yes, sir.
On the special call meeting agenda? We can go through it because he. Due to the pending litigation, I just wanna make sure that we do, do everything properly. Yes, as a previous litigation, yes. That this. There's some cases involving that.
Yes, sir.
And I don't wanna further compromise city position. Yes, as a general matter, it is abundantly clear, the city council creates every position in the city. And the, we're having a discussion about a position that community liaison, it has never been created by the city council. Yours established a base pay to create a position. And then it works with another mechanism, which is the budget established to pay. If there's no position, there should be no pay.
All right. Uh, next item on the agenda, Arkansas Street, Saint Francis Street Truck Traffic, Ms. Ford and Mr. Franklin requesting an update, and at this point, mayor's not here.
It's my understanding that the individual who was leading this doing it has been. Doing some military training, and they're just gonna get back with us soon as he gets back. There has been no legal documents since that time for you. But I will update you as soon as I get some information back from him.
All right, thank you, sir. The next item on the agenda, code enforcement update at the request of Ms. The Arkansas Street, Saint Francis Street Truck Traffic, Madam Clerk, if you will, please. So noted, code enforcement update, Ms. Davis's request, Ms. Davis may not here, and so we'd like to have that placed on. It's regular agenda. Ms. Davis, code enforcement date to go on the next regular agenda, and we have a treasurer's report and discussion, and the treasurer has stepped out. So let's pass that, and there's some ordinances that are listed for the fire department, water department, sanitation, and landfill. Regarding expenses that need approval. Is there anyone here who's prepared or capable of making a presentation on these ordinances? Uh, there's three ordinances for the fire department, emergency. And on the agenda, emergency equipment professionals, pumper repair, fourteen thousand dollars, five, fourteen thousand five hundred and twenty-one dollars and forty-two cents. Fire department, emergency equipment professionals, pumper repair, eight thousand eight hundred and sixty-three dollars and ninety-five cents. Also fire department, emergency vehicle specialist pump repair, nine thousand three hundred and seventy dollars and twelve cents. I have no idea what the nature of those repairs are, and there's nothing that I can add to it. Yes, sir.
Are you all going to meet next Tuesday to discuss finances? If you're, if you all are, maybe we can discuss this financial emergency Tuesday. If you, if you all intend to do so, yes, ma'am.
I have two ordinances that I would really like you to look at tonight, please, if you don't mind, the first one would be the sanitation. The River City Hydraulics, it's a pump for a garbage truck, five thousand sixty-five dollars and seventy-eight cents. Uh, we were down to one truck, and. Because of our slow pay, River City had us on COD. And they found out that we were down to just one truck, and. They were kind enough to take it on faith that we would present this to the council tonight and be able to hopefully mail them a check. We, they went ahead and let us have the pump so we could get that garbage truck up and running.
Well, just a second, Mr. City Attorney, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's a five thousand dollar expense, so it does not need to be bid out.
Five thousand sixty-five dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Sixty-five dollars over. It didn't have to be bid.
It has to be approved.
It just had to be approved.
So Ms. Ford is, is a motion to. It doesn't have to have.
Let us pause, let's pause.
Okay.
It's less than seven thousand five hundred, Mr. Etherly's saying, the city's bidding limit is seven thousand five hundred. Purchase is five thousand, this is over the five thousand dollar purchase.
Okay, so I have a motion by Ms. Ford to approve the purchase of a pump tandem assembly for sanitation truck at the cost of five thousand sixty-five dollars and seventy-eight cents, is that correct, Ms. Ford? And I have a second by Mr. Franklin, is that correct? No, no number, no ordinance needed, no, no.
I believe the vote is to authorize, to appropriate and authorize a payment of. Uh, the, the five thousand dollars, is that correct? Five thousand sixty-five dollars and seventy-eight cents, is that correct?
That's correct. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Saint Columbia.
Yeah.
Franklin.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Then my second request is, it's landfill, it's six days of rental. Own the dozer, the name of the company is Dozer, and it's six thousand two hundred and ninety dollars. I don't know if the status of the dozer that we are replacing, it's still, the dozer is in bones, I believe. A waiting repair, we're trying to get some numbers together for the repair, and we've had to rent a dozer so we could continue to cover the debris.
We approved.
You did.
Approved that at the last meeting, I made that motion. Question is, there was a gap. Is this six thousand for the gap? Or this six thousand for the future, what, what I'm saying is a practical matter. When the mayor came last week, he was saying, well, the contract expires on Wednesday or Thursday, we're gonna need another one. And so, there's a six thousand cover, Thursday, Friday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. Or what is the cover? Cause we, last week was supposed to end Wednesday, according to what the mayor said. And so we had Thursday, Friday, which would have been the, the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, I mean, twenty-ninth and thirtieth of September. Then you had October the third, fourth, uh, which is four days, then that'd be the fifth and the sixth would be. Through Thursday, if you're talking about the six thousand, is there six, six day, is a thousand dollar a day?
Yes. Okay, if, if it pleases the council, we will use this six thousand two hundred and ninety dollar appropriation covering that. And then if they're needing it for another week, we'll come back at the special call meeting next Tuesday night, and we'll ask for another week.
The total expectancy, seven five hundreds, at some point, we're gonna have to do an ordinance, yes. Because initially it started out, what we're, what we're doing is we're engaging in serial contracts. Because it's, it's, it's on and on, the whole thing is over seven five hundred dollars.
So, is there a, and what city attorney is suggesting is that we, at some point. Address this by ordinance, but. For, as of now, is there a motion to approve the expense in the amount of six thousand two hundred and ninety dollars? Motion by Davis, second by Franklin, to approve the dozer expense in the amount of six thousand two hundred and ninety dollars. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll? Yes.
Ford. Davis. Franklin. Saint Columbia. If I may, I just got a text from Mr. Bobby Jones, who's the. Of the Public Works. He said they picked up the dozer today, so this six thousand two hundred and ninety will cover the gap, and we'll have some money left over. And that's the only ones that we are really needed tonight.
The remaining ordinance requests, three from the fire department, three from the water department, I would suggest be placed on. Since there's nobody here to make the presentation, be placed on the next meeting, I believe, there's gonna be a special call meeting, they can go on that agenda. And that only leaves one item. That only leaves one item to be addressed, and the treasurer has returned, that is the report and or discussion from the treasurer, do you have anything to add to what you've already?
Uh, no, sir.
Then that concludes the agenda as, Mr. Franklin? Yes, sir.
Since the mayor said he was down working, so.
Guess one of the primary questions the body typically have you, had they resolved all the issues relating to your property?
No, sir, they, they're.
At six o'clock, did they meet with you?
No, I haven't met with anyone.
Were you notified of a meeting today at six o'clock with the mayor?
No, sir.
Okay, and so the mayor had contacted you all about his meeting at six o'clock today?
No.
Were you aware that that's supposed to be a meeting about your property at six o'clock, you mayor, and?
No, sir.
Were you aware of a meeting about you, it's supposed to be at five AM tomorrow?
No.
So you received zero notice from the mayor or King Biscuit Blues Fest about a meeting?
Yes, sir.
That you're supposed to be at right now?
Yes, sir.
I asked you those questions, you weren't here earlier, but the mayor left a note, the specific said he was meeting about your property. That's why he's not attending the meeting right now, you've been an audience since six thirty-nine, it's noted. And seven twenty now, and you were not aware of any meeting that's going on, but Mr. Franklin has some questions for you, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. So you, it's still the same issue that you had. Last year, when you came in and asked us to make sure that this didn't happen, they promised it, they wouldn't block your streets up there, Ms. Boyd had some, some, I went down there and saw where. If a car come out, it's gonna be a collision on her property, got it blocked off where. The people can walk across, but if you went out to hit somebody, you hit, you hit a person, so they still gave her. Uh, we still got the same problem, and I think that we said if this were resolved, if something must happen to, to show. King Biscuit Blues Fest, but they ain't working good faith, she, she owns their property, and I'm just gonna say this, it, it amazes me how the city looks. Can, can you agree with me that the city looks so good, we spend taxpayers' dollars to get it cleaned up, it looks so good around highways, we can't get them like this all year. We have a festival comes in, they cutting grass, cutting limbs, moving stuff, you, police is everywhere, it, it bothers me that, you know, this is a property, she can't get to it. She, but, but ain't nobody gonna help her pay them taxes come October first, oh, it was our time, ain't it? Yeah, power washing the sidewalk, spending cities money, and we can't get up to and care. But then we got some folks around the table, you know, they won't vote to investigate, but they'll vote to approve orders on anything else. It was, I'm kinda worried about it, and what can we legally do to make, what can we do to make sure her issues are resolved tonight? If they can't get it done, to vote so, or commit or something, or do something, because it is not fair that every year she comes here with the same thing, and we get a Blues Fest, good faith. Yes, if it's bringing so much money here, why we, what, what, what the city getting off the Blues Fest? What is it, what, Ms. Ma'am, do you receive any money from King Biscuit Blues Fest?
We only receive a percentage of, of the vendors off of their food, and the vendor pays that.
Is it a lot of money?
No.
Okay, so we have to, our police is gonna go down there and work, right?
I've been told they're not working the festival this year.
But I, I can't have them, right? So we're getting.
What do you mean they're not working the festival this year?
That they're not going to be working for the Blues Fest, but they'll be patrolling the city.
Okay. Who's working the Blues Fest?
Uh, private security.
Yeah, I better wake up, run the whole city, y'all, y'all see what's happening, the city looks so good, everything is cut, power washed, no. We got, Ms. Boyd got an issue, so Mr. Attorney, can you tell me how, how can we, what, what must I do? Because see, if she ain't getting, we can't take it.
Y'all already voted that they will not restrict ingress and egress to her property, and they would make accommodation to it, so.
Well, I move revoked it.
No.
Do something.
What I'm saying is, y'all already voted that they will not restrict in, in.
Right.
Ingress, egress to her property.
So what do we do, now we voted not doing, so what we, what, what, what can, what do they do?
There's nothing for the body to do, the issue is just need to force agreement that they, that she has access to her.
Okay, so who can we get to force it, cause he down there, we don't know what he's saying, we don't know what kind of music he playing down there with them.
Wait till the festival starts to see if she doesn't have.
Well, if you didn't get it, Ms. Boyd, I'd be happy to help you, I'd go down there with you, oh my god.
It's kinda narrow, the, the way that they got the orange plastic things out in the middle of the road.
Well, let's see, let's see what he has to say, if you'd be so happy to join us.
I will pass the torch.
My apologies for being absent, I was doing what I promised the council I would do, is meeting down there at Walnut Street. With, with property owners, and yes, Ms. Boyd tried to charge me for parking in her parking spot. Uh, so I moved across the street, but yeah, of course, we talked, we met, are you trying to say that we didn't? Excuse me? Are you trying to say at a public meeting on Zoom that you didn't just meet with me?
No, I didn't meet with you, you sat in your car, and I got out of my car and came to you and asked you, may I help you? Then you said, oh, I'm down here with Jack, I told him I.
Then you said, oh, I'm down here with Jack, I told him I promised him that I would be down here with him, that's what you told me, sir.
Right, so then, so then you did see me? I didn't ask you, I didn't ask you, did you, did you see me? Did we, did we talk?
No, we did not talk.
We did not.
I asked a question, I asked you what is it that you need? And you spoke and said that you're down here to see Jack, you told him, you promised him that you'll be here to see him. And that was it.
So is it true that you just showed up and told the council that you didn't see me? I didn't ask you, I'm asking Ms. Boyd, is it true, is that true? Did you just tell the council that you didn't meet, meet him, see me? You didn't talk to me? This boy, I asked you a yes, yes or no question?
Said no.
No, no, no.
So you did meet. Yes or no? Did I ask you whether you were happy with this situation?
No, we didn't.
I did. And I, and I also met, also met. Ms. Boyd, there are other people down there. So, I'm done, they're down there and they're happy, they're happy with this.
He zoomed in his car.
Show up in a public meeting and, and. And miss asleep people, when I spent an hour and a half working on this, uh, because I promised that I would. I didn't say.
He did not, he did not meet with me, counselor.
Listen, I just got a text message from somebody.
Did you send me walk down the street with the other property owners? Did you move one of the barriers?
I got pictures of you.
So you know that I was.
Somebody in a truck, yeah, I took pictures, I got pictures.
For the record, I asked a question, I asked her, did, did the mayor notify you of a meeting? And she said, no.
No.
I asked her, uh.
It wasn't my job to, my job is to meet with. You're, you're asking a question that has no relevance, I never agreed.
It's about her property.
You're being argumentative. As agreed, I met down there with, with the security team to make sure Ms. Boyd's parking lot had access. To parking from the public, and it does.
It does not.
And so did, and the other property owners were happy, I walked the street, this boy chose not to walk with us. But she could have, just like the others did. And the other property owners are happy with the public access to their property.
But they're not.
I can't speak for Ms. Boyd and whether she's happy or not. Is, I'm sorry.
And it was still blocked.
I got something to say.
It's just simple. And and the council can do whatever you want, you do whatever you want, say I wouldn't down there as, as I promised I would be. I can't. I promise this, I promise, no ma'am. What relevance do you have in this conversation, were you there? Were you there?
Thank you guys, but they did block me, I'm gonna do one of your number.
Okay.
He good, he spend the city's money though.
The, the city council requested that our property not be blocked by the security company. Offered to meet with the security company down there in the morning if necessary to make sure that that did not happen. They wanted to meet this evening, and so I met them down there this evening. It just so happened the property owners were also down there, and most of them met with me at length about a couple of things. And, uh, and and we went over, we walked the street, we went over and over again what the flow of traffic would be and all those other things. Uh, if Ms. Boyd's still not happy, I I'm sorry, but she, there is public access, I'm confident that her parking lot will be full, provided that her. Rates are competitive, uh, because the public has access and it's really close to a public venue. And so that the public understands, we have seen a lot of problems in festivals in recent years with. Cars crashing into the public, uh, with sniper fire and all kinds of security issues. What, what the festival is trying to do is, is everything possible to prevent that from happening. There is a live venue just within yards of this road, and so they're trying to restrict. Traffic flow to that venue and at the same time provide access to parking to the private properties, they've accomplished that. And, uh, Ms. Boyd's still not happy, I can't, I can't, I can't speak for her, but I can say this very clearly, as of right now. There's plenty of public access to our parking and I'm sure she will have full parking as long as her rates are reasonable. Because it's really close to that venue, that's, that's, bottom, yeah, politicize everything, I guess, it's very simple. I just got here from those, from those meetings.
Couple of days, uh, we'd like to ask somebody this question about this, this, this finances. We got the, we got this nice letter from you, you, you know, you check your email in a couple hours, you, you go ahead, the same problem, try to stick on the city treasury. You've been having the same issues, but you're spending, and you can note that you got one person that always gonna ride with you, you know, that is. Is you do no wrong, but you, you spend these taxpayers' dollars, if it's your money, you do what you wanna do, when you wanna do it. We so ignorant that you think, we got a little sense, it's a letter coming to you.
Mr. Franklin, do you know what happened to the money?
Do you? Do you know what happened to it? All these, let, let, let me calm down. Let's see, you just spent twenty four hundred dollars here, let's, we, you, you asking for, so listen, you got, when you spend four thousand, then you spend forty six. You spend nine hundred, you spend forty eight, then you turn around, you spend forty seven, you spend forty eight. Uh, you turn around and spend another forty one hundred dollars for some trees to be cut down, spend another forty one hundred dollars, let's keep going, you spend forty four hundred dollars. And let's see, you spend another forty five, you spend another forty two, forty two, you spend another seventy, forty seven hundred. Let's go, and you didn't have purchase request for this stuff, you been. Wait, wait, wait.
So you do know?
Oh, wait, 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 let me help you out. You got Darnell Jones, watch this, Captain, you know, he told the forty eight thousand, six hundred and thirty two thousand fifty six that you spent without approving. Let's go to, uh, Mid-South, you spent twelve thousand eight hundred fifty dollars without this body approval, the global tech, you turn around, you spent another twelve thousand. Without our approval, let's go, uh, Carport, you spent ten thousand, let's keep going, uh, Calvin Gray, you spent twelve thousand two hundred dollars, let's keep going. Frank Clancy, you spent eight thousand eight hundred dollars without this body approval, let's keep going, Billy Wim, you spent twenty one thousand two hundred fifty dollars. Without this body approval, you want to keep going, Kevin Smith, Rita, Rita Robinson, she spent twenty thousand five hundred dollars without this body's approval. Without a purchase order, let's keep going, West Coast Company, you spent four thousand eight hundred fifty dollars, Larry Delk and Associates, you spent. Forty six hundred dollars with them, let's keep going, Robert Bailey, you spent forty five hundred with him. Let, Booze, whoever that is, you spent, uh, nine hundred fifty dollars, let's keep going, Anthony Rhodes, you spent. Two thousand, two thousand forty fifty dollars, you have spent money without this body approval, that's why we couldn't pay payroll, okay? Ms. Sandy, agree with me, attend me from now, you can't pay your bills. Wait a minute, brother, I got the floor, Ms. Ma'am. You cannot pay the, you cannot pay your bills because you have these checks that the mayor come and says, we need to pay them, right?
Why do you ask Ms. Sandy? If I'm, if I'm, if, if she. Why are you asking, why are you asking me about bills? Why, why, why are you asking Ms. Ramsey, why? So, you, so why are you asking me about something, and then you turn to her? Do you know?
When we got on top, what I don't know, she don't know. See, your problem is, Kevin Smith, you don't, you, you know what you need this counsel for? It's just like that, that check that you got, this, uh, Mr. Turner just talked about, that city, you tried to cash in, that's what you're mad about, you come in, you big man. But let's watch it. Just like all the money you spent, you, 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 you told the public that it was us. Who unfunded the money for them pumps, you didn't go back and say, the pumps was a problem when I got here. Watch this, and there was a problem when you got here, you all the way, you're well, at the door to try to fix some problem that you had the first day you walked in the door, you, sir. No, 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 I don't, I don't, I don't appropriate money. I can't pay, I'm paying it all, brother, I'm good with it, what you should be doing, you down here trying to make Mr. Turner looking company and trying to make us look. The shoe on you, you set a buck stop with you, look at what you're doing, you can't, you can't, you gotta, you gotta.
How long have you been on the city council? How long? Twelve years?
Make any decisions, I don't, you know what? Job is done when I appropriate a budget.
How long?
I approve whatever, we, we, we got more done than you have.
How long?
Ask yourself, how long?
What is the job of the city treasurer?
You know what?
What's the city treasurer's job? Do you know? You've been on the city council twelve years.
Know my job, my place to know what I'm supposed to do, I can't care less about Sandra Ram's job, Derek Turner, city attorney. I only care about my job as captain, so your job, what your job is, to hire and company and people to do a job that this.
Your job is to know what the city treasurer does. And apparently after.
For city treasurer, I ran for council, I know that job.
So you don't, so you don't know? So you don't know what the treasurer does, then what is it?
He know his job.
Do you?
Yeah, I know.
What is it?
Same as yours, spend his money like you been doing. Department here, you didn't know that job, and that's why we can't skin anybody, let me come back, let me tell you what the problem. You mad because.
I'm not mad.
We, we can't take our prisons anywhere, young folks' houses getting robbed, and we had a whole, did y'all know we had a whole rob and spree? And we can't take these young folks nowhere because we owe everybody, we had to take them away down to Danceville, Arkansas. We, you, sir, I'm not, I'm not incumbent on you, you are an incompetent mayor, cause you ain't get nothing done. We got a code enforcement right now, that if your house get, you can't get a house torn down, you ain't got nobody, you got nobody to do a job here, worth nothing. That's why the crime is high, that's why people are moving away, because reason why people are moving away in this place, cause you can do whatever you want here.
Mr. Franklin.
No, don't miss the Franklin.
These problems have been here for twelve years.
You apply for the job, and you should have did the job, you have not, you left the city in the same state it was when you got it. You have not changed anything, but your supporters think so, let me tell you something, if you was a real mayor. Real mayor leaning on their city council, if the ma, if the city council, it handles finances. You, sir, if you wanna buy ink painting, you should say, hey, do we have it? Okay, really? Look around yourself, sir, look at the city, the water, what kind of mayor, Mr. Mr. Valley, and I'm gonna leave him, what kind of mayor? Buy, we rent pumps at eight hundred thousand dollars for a year, we paying sixty thousand dollars a month for pumps, we are never own. Understand this, citizen, you spend sixty thousand dollars a month on pumps that you rent, you never own them. So, your job is this, you blame everybody else for the problems of Helena, but you, sir, said a buck stop with you. These folks getting robbed, and you, sir, ain't paying the bills because we owe all these. Go to Cross, uh, uh, Cross County, ask you if we drop from prison there, no, Ms. Ma'am, though we owe a lot of folks, we can't house any prison nowhere.
Why do you always look to?
Cause she paid the bill, she paid.
She pays the bills, but you.
Your friends, that's how you go, you try to win this campaign, you paying your friends, uh, what's the, you know who you paying? Mr. Turner, y'all, he make sure y'all cut them checks for, uh.
Mr. Turner.
Miss, you know what you're doing, and we not gonna get on this, come on, let's go, cause you know you ain't. Talk to her any kind of way, she's a female, you ought to have some kind of respect for a female, cause if that was your mama, I have respect for your mother because she is a woman. You don't have respect for this body, you do what you wanna do, when you wanna do it, that's why this fit, you said you got us out of debt, we in debt.
We did, I did. You were seven hundred thousand dollars in debt. You had three million dollars in unsecured.
We pumped out, Zalem came here, Zalem came here and decided, Zalem came here and said that we owe eight hundred thousand dollars. And guess what, the first time, we, they said four hundred thousand.
Mr. Franklin, the only tactic you have is to talk over everybody, you don't care about the truth, you don't speak. You don't speak truth to power, you speak lies to power. And and if you to pay the two fifty, that I asked you.
She couldn't pay it, you can't pay the taxes when you paying it, when we told you, you knew the taxes would do, you knew that would do, but you wanna. Mr. Turner, did we not know the taxes would do, and he pays Zalem, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, so you, sir, you can't outtalk me, I, I think alone if you know what you been doing. I'm smart enough to understand that these taxes could have been paid, but you chose Zalem over the taxes, Mr. Turner, am I correct? He chose Zalem over the taxes.
He chose not to pay, he knew about the taxes, he chose not to.
I risk my case.
That's absolutely. I found out about the same day you did. But, no ma'am, you don't have permission because, well, you can ask. Mr. Franklin, this is not a circus, this is a city council meeting, this is city business. When I was, Mr. Franklin.
Follow direction, you have no respect for us, and you, and you know why? Because we're eight hundred, we were eight hundred, we gave Zalem eight hundred thousand dollars, the money we would never get back, we been renting pumps. Now, Mr. Mr. St. Columbia, you, you out of order.
You're out of control.
I'm just telling the truth. If I'm out of control is because I'm passionate about the way this city looks, I'm, I'm sorry that you don't understand. We could have paid taxes, we got COVID money that we could have.
This city is because you won't close your mouth and allow the city to take care of its business. This is a business meeting.
It is a business.
Not a campaign speech for me, okay, I'm sorry, I know you wanna use it for that, but this is a business meeting.
But I ain't not spending taxpayers' dollars to get it.
Mr. Franklin, I need you to suspend so we can conclude whatever business is left on the agenda.
We're having.
Let me clarify, that, that the day I found out about the payroll taxes was the day that I announced it to the public. And when I asked why the mayor didn't know, the answer was because they were telling the city treasurer. And the city treasurer was the person who was listed with the Arkansas Department of Finance Administration Revenue Department. As the official with the city of Helena, who was being, West Town, who was being notified about payroll taxes. And I specifically asked them to add the mayor to that list. And why it was, and they said, we just assumed that somebody told you, but they didn't. I had to hear it from the state the same day I told you, this, the mayor is not responsible for payroll or payroll taxes.
Who is?
The treasurer is responsible for payroll taxes. Now, if you wanna hold somebody accountable, if you wanna speak truth to power, I suggest you speak truth first. And that's, that, that, sir, is the truth, Mr. Valley, you recognize?
Well, I was seeing if you all want, uh, to allow Ms. Whitfield to address the body, but second. I believe, uh, that this body all learned prior to the end because when Attorney James Valley sued the city. About the statement made on this phone by Justin Eichman that, uh, the settlement was not gonna go through because the city was behind on payroll taxes until the payroll tax was done. With that, now that was this year, I don't know what time it was, but, but I think that, uh, it was at that point that the body was told, but.
Mr. Eichman is not responsible for revising city of Helena on payroll taxes. Isn't that true?
That's true, but he said that, that, that you would have, he said that the city treasurer informed you that you didn't have the taxes.
So the city treasurer informed the municipal lady, but didn't inform the mayor?
Said informed the mayor, they told, he told the whole body. Everybody was here, he told the whole body at the time of the settlement.
Payroll taxes?
He said that's the reason why the settlement couldn't go through at the point in the point of payment, cause you would say that you were made aware that the taxes were behind.
From twenty eighteen with the federal government, which you agreed to settle. And you approved the settlement, but we had yet to write a check for forty thousand some odd dollars. That was for the tax year twenty eighteen, before I was mayor, it was federal taxes. It was a settlement that you approved, but we had not yet made the payment as our prior agreement with the treasury department. And that was, that was the discussion about payroll taxes that I recall. The state of Arkansas will tell you that the city of Helena was notified via the city treasurer's office. About back payroll taxes.
And what I'm saying. And that is, when Justin Eichman addressed this body, he, he said that the settlement would not go through. Uh, uh, because that was federal and state taxes and APERS that you wanted to make sure you had been invited, you were behind on that. Is that accurate, Ms. Ramsey? Is that accurate, Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Okay, and so, is that accurate, city council? It's not ganging up on you, it's clearing the racket up, ma'am, ma'am, you stated, Attorney James Valley was here, all the people. It's not ganging up on you. It's clearing the record up, man, man. You stated, Attorney General Vala was here. All the people, it was stated for the public record.
The issue, the issue that we had not paid was the IRS taxes of twenty eighteen. The settlement that y'all approved for twenty eighteen had not yet been paid. As far as, yes, there was. I don't have time for nonsense and neither do you, and neither does the public. The facts are facts. The IRS, the IRS was after the city of Helena West Town for not paying payroll taxes on ten ninety nines from twenty eighteen. It drug on for years apparently, until I finally found out about that because the IRS chose to call me directly. And I negotiated with them and finally we, we directly approached it and we got them down to what I remember is forty thousand dollars. And y'all approved it. Yes, that's all a matter of record. And then we didn't write the check and send it to them. Why we didn't, I don't know. But that was the issue that you're referring to. And so we had to pay that before we could do anything else. And so I don't know if, if, if y'all were notified, if you may, if they thought you notified, but I was not notified. And I was notified when the state walked in my office. And I asked him, why didn't I know this sooner? And the answer was because we didn't notify you, mayor. We notified the treasurer, mayor. And he pulled up his laptop. Isn't that true, Ms. Ramsey? He pulled up his laptop and I asked him, who was the official that is being notified? And what was his answer? The treasurer. Now, those are the facts. They might be tough. They might be hard, but they're facts.
Want a cup of water?
But here's, here's saying the question that Whitfield is standing there. Do you all want to allow her to dress you up?
I, I wanna, uh, allow Ms. Whitfield to have it.
And I'm, and I publicly tonight and today requested, which is under the authority of the mayor's office, a criminal investigation and a legislative audit of this, of the payroll tax issue specifically, because of the questions that have been raised about why they were not paid. And, and I, and I don't think that anybody should disagree with being able to look into that and see why. Because if we didn't do it in twenty eighteen, and now we're not doing it in twenty twenty-two, there are reasons that go beyond but mere fiduciary responsibility. And those things are, it's not my money. It's not your money. It's the public's money.
You spend it like.
And, and the legislative auditors should look at it and it should be criminally investigated. If, if, if no criminal wrongdoing is found, and I hope they don't find any.
Why does it do it?
But the public, public deserves to know. And that's, that's what I did today. I'm sorry if y'all are upset with that or anybody not, y'all. If any, any one person is accept, is upset with that, but that is the, the burden of responsibility that we have over, over the fiduciary matters of this city, which includes this council. And that's why I did it. And I, and I don't regret it one bit. In fact, I wish we'd done it sooner, but I was still trying to gather invest, uh, information on my own.
Man, the city council, just for your information, since you mentioned it, the city council has also voted four to one and requested criminal investigation of you on, on the matters. So just telling you that, just for the record.
Well, well, that's, that's interesting, but the city council can vote to do investigation, but the mayor has the authority under ACA. And that you can investigate all you want. You're going to find the same thing. The bottom line, the bottom line is, we just had a county treasurer that was requested to be moved because of problems with finances right across the street from us. The question has been raised that we should be looking at our own situation here. I agree with that. And so I launched an investigation or requested investigation is a better way to say that. Both legislative audit and criminally of the actions behind city spending. And, and I think that was the proper course of action. That's the mayor's authority under the ACA that was, that was, uh, mentioned in that letter. And I hope that they follow up.
And the city council voted just again, they're investigating.
That's fine. The city, the city council wants to play politics, I guess.
Man, you, you're sending it to our politics.
They can look at whatever they want to look at, but we've got legislative audit for the public. We get audited every year. All of these issues get audited every year. I've requested a special audit on the payroll tax issue particularly. Because I want the public to understand who's responsible, who's responsible for payroll taxes and, and payroll in this city. You have multiple officials. They're elected, they're full-time, they're well-paid. And they have to answer to the public. We all do. So I welcome, I invite anyone who wants to look at anything. That's exactly what I initiated today was a request to look at our, our finances.
In the twenty eighteen audit, uh, the auditor found that as a result of overspending, and that's what the audits say. As a, as a result of overspending, it resulted, it resulted, as a result of overspending. Overspending resulted in late payments to vendors and, uh, delinquent payroll taxes. The report that I sent to you was telling you the same thing is happening now. Because of overpay, uh, because of overspending, we're expen, we're experiencing the same problems that we did in twenty eighteen. So because of overspending, we are having problems paying vendors on time and we are having delinquencies in our payroll taxes. And I also showed you the overspending, how much is it, it has increased since twenty twenty, since twenty nineteen to twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one and to twenty twenty-two. We have been, it has been a steady increase in overspending and, and spending, which has increased, I think, fifth, over fifty percent between, uh, twenty-one, twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. I'm not responsible for spending. There's a, what code was it?
Fourteen fifty-three.
Fourteen fifty-three oh three says that the mayor has exclusive power and responsibility for spending. It says that the city treasurer, one of my duties is to report to the city council, city council monthly, give you a monthly financial report. And also to maintain the books and records in accordance with Arkansas Municipal Accounting Law. I have done those things. I don't have power to spend and I don't have the responsibility to spend. If we spend more money, if we purchase more than we can pay for, it is not my fault. If we have payroll taxes that I do, that can't be paid, it's not because I didn't pay them. It's because we don't have the money to pay them. And why don't we have the money to pay them? Because the mayor is purchasing more than our cash flow will allow. Now, I, I, I don't, whoever opinion, you can have an opinion about this and that. It, it really doesn't matter. State of Arkansas gives you exclusive personal or your duly authorized representative. Now, I don't know how many duly authorized representatives you have going out there purchasing stuff. But I don't have the power to purchase. The clerk doesn't have the power to purchase. The clerk is trying to pay bills that are created through the mayor's office. And if payroll taxes weren't paid timely and if, uh, deposits to the IRS and if, uh, withholding, state withholders weren't paid timely. They weren't paid timely because we didn't have enough money to cover all the bills that are being created by the mayor's office.
And do you have an obligation to report that to the city council and the public?
The city council gets a financial report.
Did you notify the city council and the public about, about that?
On there.
Yes, we did.
On, on page one, uh, of the balance sheet, it has a IRS with federal withholding nine forty-one. It has as of July thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, three hundred eighty-nine thousand, two hundred six, two hundred ninety-six thousand, three hundred eighty-nine thousand, two hundred ninety-six dollars and twenty-two cents. It says, uh, Arkansas state withholding, uh, well, let me see, Department of, uh, Finance and Administration withholders, eighty-seven thousand, six hundred forty-eight dollars and sixty cents. It was in my financial.
So, so you're confident that you did your due diligence and your duty to the public to make sure that we knew about.
I filed nine forty.
Are you confident about that?
Yes, sir. I filed nine forty ones with the IRS. That is the reason why the IRS, the IRS knew how much money we owed them. Because I submit my, my nine forty ones to the IRS.
From twenty eighteen.
A nine forty.
Twenty eighteen.
Submit nine forty ones quarter.
But that's the purpose, the.
The purpose of the nine forty one, so the IRS would know.
Purpose of the investigation, the purpose of the legislative audit is to have a third party answer those questions so that the public can rely on a third party, like the legislative audit. And if there are criminal issues involved, the prosecutor. Now, there are, there, I want the public to know something. I want the public, I want the.
I wasn't finished. In the twenty twenty, in the twenty twenty financial audit, I have answered, the, the auditors asked me about the tax payments. I told them, I informed them that the taxes are current, the taxes have been paid and the state taxes and, and, and federal taxes. They have already looked at this and they have already had discussions with me about it.
Yeah, but they were.
I've already addressed it with them.
But they were late and the public didn't know about it until I told them. And that, those are the facts. And I didn't know about it until the day, the day, same day I let, I let the public know. Now, I've, I want to say this. When I became mayor, one of the things we did was create a city website. And we pu, published our legislative audits for our annual spending and federal and water reports online. And links to online sources where the public can see the legislative audits of the city, including comments and recommendations under the mayor's office, the city treasurer's office, city clerk's office and so forth. So I would, and I put that online so that there would be clear transparency. Their public may not know that there is an annual audit done by the state as a third party every single year. And the legislative auditors just finished with us and concluded that the mayor has no role in the sales tax or, I mean, in the, uh, payroll and payroll tax issue. And I was not cited for any of those things. That's not been published. Uh, but you will notice when you look at the legislative audits online that have been published, you can look at the comments yourself and judge for yourself about what office does what and whether they've done it. But this is about this particular issue and a few others. And I invite and welcome any scrutiny that comes from it. And I think the public deserves it and they deserve a third party to look at it. Now, that, that is basically, uh, ACA code gives the mayor the authority to do that. And I'm simply upon my responsibility under that law.
I, I have another comment.
There's a motion on the table. There's a motion on the table. Is, to adjourn. Is there a second? I should dash for lack of second.
I have a, a quick comment about the, the late payroll taxes. The payroll taxes were late in twenty eighteen. And so, and we paid them. The payroll taxes, we paid the payment in, 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 in May. They were late in May. We paid them. We, because of cash flow issues, we have late payments to payroll taxes and, and, and all sorts of other vendors. And so that, that's just the way we operate. We have to operate because we're spending too much. We, we, we're overspending. Now, the other issue other than the payroll taxes, which have been, which are current and have been corrected and they've been paid and they are current, uh, that the city council did not discuss was this unauthorized redemption of a CD. Now, this CD has been redeemed by a bank that did, as far as I know, didn't have any signatures. And so as far as I know, you, i- if you are aware that, uh, two signatures are required to redeem a CD, why would you even present a CD for redemption when you know two CD, when you know two signatures are required? Because you signed, you signed a, you signed the resolution, uh, the resolution that says that you have to have two signatures to do it. And you signed, you signed the resolution, so you can't say that you don't know that two signatures.
That we're talking about, we're talking about a CD.
A hundred and twenty-two thousand dollar CD.
Afforded you, afforded you an email from the bank that reported it to email.
October fourth.
Made an error. Yep. And the email from the bank this morning that said they should have required two signatures, but that's the bank's fault, not mine. I repeatedly asked them. I repeatedly asked them.
Did you try to get two signatures before you presented it?
I'm not on trial here.
You, yes, you are. And, did you, did you?
Mr. Turner, if you want me to ask you a question, I will, but.
Now, you not listen, you don't know what question I'm asking.
I told you.
Did you, did you request, did you try to get a second signature before you presented it to the bank?
Mr. Turner, you have in your email a response from the bank that says their policy was one signature. That's what they said last week. That's the policy question. And I, and I asked them repeatedly. And I've read the same CD that you've read. And they said, no, their policy. And they checked with the supervisor and came back and said, your signature is enough. And this morning at ten o'clock, I asked if you, if you have some concerns in documentation about why we can't do this, to come see me. And you went to go get breakfast and you repeatedly ignored phone calls from the bank.
You, you asked me.
So, so.
The money, the money, the redent.
Okay, but if your concern was that we couldn't break the CD because of the two signatures, then that's, then you could have told me that.
I said.
You had an opportunity to tell me that this morning. The bottom line is, the public doesn't really care, I don't think, about what you and I say to each other. There's a third party that can look at that and that's what they're gonna do. And I've asked them to do that and they're gonna do it. And I, and I'm, and I hope that they do a good job. And I think they will. That's the bottom line. And I forwarded that stuff to the council, so the council has it as well. And you're more than welcome to call the bank yourself. But the other issue here.
You didn't ask the question, man.
Other, I just, I just told you. I told you, I asked the bank repeatedly.
That the city, the city requires two signatures.
I didn't know. I did, Mr. Turner, the bank said, they only needed, Mr. Turner. I asked you to be there this morning if you had any reason to believe that we couldn't do it and you did not show up.
Already been done.
Isn't that true? No.
I had, I have the check. Today is October fourth. I have a check from First State Bank.
And did you get the email that I sent you?
But the CD had already been redeemed.
Because the bank made an error.
You were asking, you were asking me why, why wasn't I allowing the, the check to be the.
Mr. Turner, first, they, the bank repeatedly said last week they only required one signature and it should have been two. And I asked them repeatedly, should it be two? It says on the CD two. And they'd look for the supervisor and came back and said, no, it only requires one. Now, the bigger question is that we are not paying the fuel bill that keeps these pumps going. Mr. Mr. Scroggins is who asked for that CD to be used to pay that bill. He came to this council meeting a week ago to talk about it. The response he got was, because it was a special meeting and we couldn't add it to the agenda, was do what you'd need to do to pay the bill. His opinion was that we should cash the CD. My question was, is there any reason why we can't do that? And the bank's answer was, you only need one signature. And, uh, so, and then this morning I asked again. And we had a meeting that Mr. Turner did not show up for about this. And that, and that is the bottom line. We had to pay the fuel bill so that the city can continue to get water and sewer services.
Mr. Franklin, let, let, hold, wait, wait, let me add this, let me add this.
The city council never proved.
I was not asked for the record, for the record and for the listening public to, to, to hear. I was not asked to sign anything before the CD was redeemed. That in order to redeem the CD, you need two signatures. I was not asked to sign anything to authorize the redemption of the CD. Neither was Mrs. You don't need me. You need another signature.
Is there some reason you couldn't let me know that this morning?
The city clerk could have allowed, could have signed, could have, could have given authorization to redeem the CD. But no, none of us were, were aware that a CD was being redeemed in the first place. The, the reason.
That's not, that's also not true.
I did not know.
You might not have known.
I did not know. So if I didn't know, how can you ask me for, how can you ask me for a signature if I don't know? And then.
I didn't ask you for a signature.
Okay then, so why am I being blamed for not having a signature?
I'm, okay, and then another thing is. Blimey for not.
The meeting today was about depositing the check. And I see it, there's no use in me coming to a meeting to deposit the check. Because the CD was unauthorized, was redeemed, was unlawful to redeem the CD without approval from the city council. And so if they had, even if, if Mrs. Jackson had, had asked me, had got in touch with me, that day that they redeemed the CD, I would not have signed. Cause I did not have authorization from the city council. I wouldn't sign it if they had gotten.
And she called, she called you.
She did not. She did not.
The bank informed me that they called you repeatedly and you didn't return their calls. Now, I, I specifically asked you to come to a meeting at ten o'clock to discuss this this morning and you did not show up.
You asked me to come to a meeting about depositing the check. The CD had already been unauthorized. You had already done an illegal redemption of the CD. That had already happened.
He said, he said, she said, the bottom line is, you have a, you have a fuel bill that needs to be paid.
CD should not have been redeemed.
If you want the public to continue to get water and sewer services, there's, there's a fuel bill that has to be paid. Now, it, it, it's my understanding that just because a bill accumulates over time and doesn't get paid, doesn't mean that it has to be approved by the council. But we brought that up to council a week ago. A week ago, Mr. Scroggins was here. He brought it up. We had a discussion. It was said at the council, do what you need to do to pay that fuel bill so that we can keep the water and sewer services going. His recommendation was to cash the CD.
And the redemption of the CD has to be approved by the city council.
I'm, I'm telling you what happened.
The redemption has to be approved. Was it approved by the city council?
Mr. Turner, I, I, I asked the question Friday. I didn't, I wasn't aware of any reason. And I asked the bank how many signatures they required, because it looked to me like it said two, but there were other signatures already on there. And I haven't done this before, to be quite honest, and they said one. And I said, are you sure? Cause I think it says two. And they looked it up and in them, in the email that you got to, they clarify that they made a mistake. So look at your email, look at your email, but that's fine. But that's why I had a meeting this morning. I wanted to know in writing, why was it, what kind of documentation it said, we couldn't do this? And if you had any concerns, but you did not show. The first, the first, Mister Turner, first, I heard of your concern was in an email to the city council.
Had already been done.
This has been going on since last Tuesday.
It had already been done.
So.
It had already been done.
So it will be looked at. No, it wasn't deposited. So. Now, that's what the meeting this minute, this morning, I, I want to know in writing, what objection there is to do this? Is, if, if, if the council, I asked that question. I asked last week, is there any reason that the mayor cannot do it? And I thought you had to have two signatures, because that's what it said.
Let me spoil it go.
Because, listen, this, I, I think I would. I'm not, I'm not on trial here. There, there, there has been. And there will be, because I asked for it. And an independent third party investigates those issues. The most important of which is the payroll tax issue, which has continued not to be answered in a satisfactory way. Now, that's the fact. You can, no, no, you can, you can retaliate, you can, you can do all you want to do. The truth of the matter is, Mr. Scroggins still needs to get the payment made on the fuel bill. And, 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 and it's the city council, as you continue to point out, Mister Franklin, who approves expenditures. So the question is before the council, what want to do about that bill? Do you want the, can, you want the city to go without water and sewer services?
Can I ask him?
That is, that is the more, that is the more important question. I didn't ask you anything on that tonight. But that is the bigger question.
Last week, when we were talking about that, Mister Scroggins was there. Mrs. Ramsey said something about they had made an agreement with George to pay ten thousand dollars or whatever. And I said something like, we're paying ten thousand dollars on it, but we're still charging. That doesn't help the thousand dollars or whatever that we owe. I asked something about, uh, was there any monies left in, uh, what is it though? Right. Uh huh. So nothing was brought up here in this meeting about cashing in a CD.
Right.
Now, now, I, I don't know if anybody else remember that, but that's, you know.
I remember that, which is. And to even go further, Miss Bo with you on that.
And not a new bill, so why would we have to approve it anyway?
Right, and then.
It's a necessity. It, it can't be turned.
And then, and there was.
To go further with this.
Never received the initial five thousand dollar approval.
Right.
For the, and that's what I was saying is that in fourteen fifty-eight, three oh five. What you all have done, and I said it was onerous, but what you all have done is in spinach over five thousand for the year. A, a series of spinach, just you have to get it approved. That's what the, that's what the ones. I'm not finished, man.
I've got a question for you.
But that's the, that's what the issue is. And I said, the practical thing, what the mayor's office needs to do was say, we're gonna spend as much on fuel. And I said, well, he needs to go ahead, bring somebody, said, we got this issue with these long, I need you all to go ahead and prove, so I want to come back to you again about this five thousand dollars. I said that last week, it had never been done.
Is it your position?
Mr. Turner said it would be appropriate, but I said, if you read the, the, this is on the table right here. It says, it calls fourteen fifty-eight, three oh three and fourteen fifty-eight, three oh five. The mayor has exclusive right, but that right could be limited by section three oh five. And it says of any, any contract over five thousand dollars, and it ain't just done in the series, has to be approved by. I said that I've always said that that was very onerous. I've always said that, that it was burdensome, et cetera. I see it, that I make y'all meet regularly to deal with it. And so the appropriation is one thing, but the five thousand dollar approval is a secondary approval that you all requires a body. I didn't type the ordinance, is what I said. It was done by the city council, uh, by some other lawyer, but the city council approved it. And that's what the policy is. I know you said that.
Have one question.
I know both of you understand the historical.
This is relevant for more things than this one issue. Is it your opinion legally that the city council must approve all, not contracts? This is not a contract.
It is a contract.
No, it's not.
Can you get sued on it?
It's not a contract.
Can you get sued on it?
Mister, Mister Valley, this is, this is a fuel bill. We have entered.
If it's not a contract, then how, why you paying it?
It's not a contract.
What are you paying it?
It's, it's, it's services rendered. We fuel, we use fuel, we use fuel. When you, when you fill up your car tonight, it will not be a contract. It will be a bill that you must pay, but it is not a contract. You don't sign a contract.
Let me ask you this.
When you fill up at the gas station.
For the people that's listening. The, the city is going and actually charging gas with them. And if the city doesn't pay, they have a right to take us to court. Right? In and of itself is a contract. And so each one of these are contracts. Uh, the fact that if I, if, if, that's the, you're not following city policy. You haven't done.
Have you ever had a contract for fuel? Have you ever had a contract for fuel and the entry and phone bills and all the other bills?
You're supposed to have a purchase order filed.
Have you ever had any contracts with any of those companies?
Order is evidence.
Do we, have we ever had contracts with any of those services country, companies?
You have contracts for the.
Yes or no?
Purchased, yes, we've had contracts for some of those entities.
Do have, you had them for all of them?
Not for all of them, but we had some for some of them. But the issue is.
So you're saying that now we're, we're supposed to have contracts.
I'm saying since the ordinance.
For every single financial transaction that occurs in the city?
I'm saying every single financial transaction in the city is a contract.
No matter what. So if I stop trying to get gas, it's a contract. If I don't pay the bill and they can come after me, that's, that's because it's a contract.
That's what they doing all. It's called breach of contract. That's the basic lawsuit. In person, understand.
Contract. Where are you reaching it?
You're breaching it by not paying it. You receive that service.
So who's in charge of contracts in the city?
You.
No, the city attorney is in charge of contracts in the city.
You're in charge of exclusive rights.
You are the city attorney and you're supposed to draft these agreements and contracts.
Man.
Have you drafted one with entry ever?
I've not drafted a contract with energy.
Since you've been city attorney, have you ever had a contract with entry?
I have not drafted a contract with energy.
But only today are you telling me that we're supposed.
I'm not telling you only today. I've said from day one.
Yeah, there's no objection.
When I went back.
Counsel adjourned.
No, there hasn't been an objection. Man, I've all been, let's, let's start from the record. From day one, when we were meeting, when we were facing the wall. We, we went back. We went back, will you keep recording? Cause we're, we're still, we're still here. This, this is still a meeting. This is still a meeting. The meeting is not adjourned. We're still a meeting. Anytime, the press has to be here. Anytime, one or two city council members are here. So you keep recording because there are more, they do have to record it. It is a meeting. It's required. It is a meeting. It's not adjourned. Mayor, I'm the attorney. Get out of here. Just go on leave because you, 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 you're disturbing it. Now, the issue with it is simple. This is, this is a contract. The eighty-six thousand dollars, if it were not a contract, then why are we having the obligation to pay it? I mean, this is so, when I go in, I make a contract with a person to do a particular service. If I pay somebody, do my own, it is a contract. If I charge, if I say I want to pay you forty dollars to cut my yard and you don't, and, and then I don't pay it, they can sue me for it. They go right here, small claim, going to sue me. It is a contract. And that's what it is. The, the reason why you have purchase order ordinances is so you can take care of all those details. The purchase order ordinances require the city treasurer and me, once the mayor has done the purchase order for us to look at it. To make sure that we have all our Ts crossed and all our Is dotted. The mayor is obviously by his tantrums, refusing to do so. Now, the thing about it is, it is clear, the constitution of the state of Arkansas makes it clear. You cannot engage in deficit spending. The fact that the city treasurer and the city clerk are saying that three hundred thousand dollars unpaid bills. That is the mayor engaging in deficit spending. That is not political. That's not political engagementship. That is illegal on its face. We are not the Congress of the United States. Arkansas has specific prohibitions against even having the evidence of indebtedness. If you read the constitutional provision, article twelve, section five, it said, we can't even have any evidence. That there's a possibility that we're engaging in deficit spending. And so the fact that there's evidence that's deficit spending, that starts with the purchase power from the mayor. Now, we don't have a quorum, however, the Freedom of Information Act requires that all meetings continue to be recorded. And it requires that there's more than one city council member here that you have the press here. You have the press here via Zoom. You have the public here via Zoom. Ms. Whitfield has actually addressed this body and Ms. Whitfield, we yielded you for whatever you were going to say. I want to get this on the record. To, to, to redeem a CD, it's, it requires approval by the city council. Yes, it requires approval by city council now. City council, did the city council approve redemption of the CD? No. Now, the other question that was, that was readily evident. I'm sitting right here. There's a legal question about the, the purchases of a CD and cashing of CD. The mayor never, didn't have a meeting in the meeting. He hadn't talked to me about it in the meeting. He didn't discuss the cashing a hundred twenty-three thousand CD with me at all. Even when he was here, he was arguing with Mister Turner about the, this CD and not being at the meeting, but he didn't, he didn't talk to me. Mister Turner has sent the email. We laid out the, the code relating to you all for the CD. Uh, and the mayor should have consulted. Now, the issue of whether the bank made the error. The sleight of turn that the mayor just made was this. He's aware and signed the resolution that requires two signatures. But he said, and he said, I thought it required two signatures. And then he comes back and say, well, they said one. They made the mistake. But his was not a mistake. His was an absence of mistake. It was intentional. Because he knew of the resolution, he signed it. It was an intentional act by the mayor. That he cashed it without your approval. Now, it relates to eighty-six thousand. Uh, Ms. Davis, you asked a question. The issue is, the city council wants to make sure that when you all did the ordinance, that you all were, regardless of how small the spending was for the year. Mayor Valor dropped up and down, but he had twelve million dollar budget at the time, and you limited it to five thousand dollars. City council didn't care. The ordinance is still that way. And so what the mayor should do is have sunshine, just like the Freedom of Information Act. It's for the public to know everything. And so I always lamented and said, I make you all meet, 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 meet. But this is a simple thing. It's gas. They should be, because I'm gonna spend hundred thousand dollars this year on gas. I don't want that to come back to you all regularly to ask for five thousand dollars at a time. I know it's gonna go over my five thousand dollar spending limit. I know you've already appropriated. I'm gonna do this with Jordan. Is that fine? Because here's the thing, Jordan isn't the only person that sell gas. Seventy-five hundred dollars, you, you, you're supposed to bid it. Now, business and practical, so they require you to go through and get the best, best gas price. But you spent seventy, eighty-six thousand dollars, which was joined was what's outstanding. It's not what was spent. That's what's outstanding. That's what's unpaid. It's like what the Franklin was saying about the sixty thousand dollars a month rental. But the mayor says he gave y'all notice September of last year. And you all repealed that notice ninety days later. But the mayor didn't notify you of the sixty thousand dollars a month rental until he couldn't pay it anymore. The sixty thousand dollars a month rental was supposed to be notified, you're upfront. And you all have never approved, never approved, you have to pay it at the end with a sign. You don't do this, city gonna shut down. We have this thing. You don't do it, city gonna shut down. I'm trying to save the city. But no, what is happening is you're trying to bully the city council last minute to give, give you the stuff. And then you bully the city council last minute, give you the stuff. Now I can, now you gotta pay it. What you gonna do, council? You gotta pay it. Pay it. You gotta pay it. Now, notice the three hundred thousand dollars that they're sitting there. He's not trying to bully you all with those. He's just paying people, paying, paying, paying people. And but the large expenditures, what he's bringing before you. That three hundred thousand dollars should not exist in unpaid bills. That is illegal on its face. It should not happen. It is illegal. Read the constitution. For those who watch, will, will think I may be wrong. The constitution of the state of Arkansas does not allow any governmental body to engage in deficit spending. We are not the United States senate. We're not congress. We cannot, uh, borrow money from other people to try to get, uh, or run a national deficit. Or a state deficit, or a city deficit, or a county deficit. You have to pay, you have to spend within your means. Arkansas, we believe in, 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 in having a tight belt and pay, uh, spending only what you can and paying out what you can. Uh, the other issue about the water utility is you all have to be very conscious of the fact that when rural water came to talk to you all about this. They said, even in a disaster, the race that you're raising this water bills by, we still should be able to pay the bills. Every year, the citizens' bill's been raised the past three years. They're tied to consumer price index. But we are still unable to pay water utility bill. The water utility still is borrowing money from the city. Water utility still is not paying the city its sanitation fees, but never belonged to the water utility. And so the issue is quite simply mismanagement. It is, it is, it is clear on its face. The government, federal government gave the city one point two million dollars in, uh, American Rescue Act funds. And the city has spent over a million dollars paying, uh, past due bills for the water utility. I mean, it's with you. I'm sorry. You can go ahead and go.
For your patience, I will try not to be very long. I just talked to your mayor down in front of, on Walnut Street, in front of my friend Ronald Lot's, uh, uh, parking lot. And I know that the city council voted that these lots would not block under any circumstances this year for this Blues Festival. As, uh, Money Jordan had done them, uh, two years ago, yeah, more than two years ago. I had a long talk with him and I believe that he left because he knew that I was gonna bring up some of the things that he told me. He said that the blocks were put there to keep anyone from racing down, uh, Walnut Street, because there'd be shoes in the towns where there were festivals. And to, uh, protect the, that, I forget the name of the business right there on the corner. That was gonna be staged there, under there. And it was to protect them as well. And so nobody could be racing down Walnut Street and perhaps start shooting as they, we hear about in other towns. And that's why he said those blocks were put there. But I've talked to my friend, Ms. Boyd, and we know that there's, the ingress, the ingress has been decreased, even though the council voted that these lots should not be blocked. He referred to the people's lot that were across the street where we're standing, which is, when I came upon him, that's where he was. But he had been on Ms. Boyd's lot probably fifteen minutes before I got there, asking her how much she was charging to park or something like that. And I tried to get her to come down here, but you know, she just lost her husband, buried her husband, but. I want you all to make it clear that to him that those orange blocks can be put at the end of Cherry Street. If he's concerned about, uh, somebody running into people, put them down at Cherry Street. Where Cherry comes in on, I think, I forget the cross street. Is it York or the street before? But not in the middle of the street in front of her lot, where she has only so much space to, for people to exit and enter. And not down the middle of the street. What's the purpose? Oh, people may come down racing through here, shooting. You know, we hear about this in other towns. That's what your mayor said among other things. And, um, I told him that is most unlikely to happen. But if you're that concerned, move them on Cherry Street so nobody can run through there shooting and, and, uh, act a fool or something. But I asked the man who was over there under that, I forget the name of the business, but you all understand what I'm talking about. There's a covered area. He said the stage is gonna be there. And the man said, we're not concerned about that at all right here. At all. I just left him, your mayor, thirty-five, forty minutes ago. And I believe that's why he went out, because he observed him watching his phone and constantly talking, because he did not want me to share with you all in his presence. What he said to me and all of this nonsense, and this is all this is about. And I'm asking you to please stop and have these blocks removed from off of Walnut, where people would walk and drive down the street. Uh, sure, we know that things happen in this life, but this is nothing but a device by Money Jordan to cripple my friend, Ms. Boyd. And block or decrease her access and entry into a lot where you all voted that it should not happen months ago. That this has got to stop. And that's why I came to talk to you all. And I please ask that you, um, give her that deference in other people down Walnut Street. Uh, my last thing is, it's been a while since I've been, uh, dressed house. But I've told the mayor also that you ran on a, a, when you ran for office. You, you said you were gonna clear out these lots, tear down these old houses and clear out all this cuts. More raccoons running around here than we ever have before, because he has not done at a minimum what he said he would do. And he needs to go. And that's what I want to share with you all. Thank you so very much for your patience.
Thank you. Well, as long as you're all in the meeting here, we have to record and we have to, uh, report. If you all decide to leave, then, uh, there is not, or there be no action taken. But on the Freedom of Information Act, until you all are meeting, Freedom of Information Act, the actions to meetings must be recorded and the statement must be recorded, so.
What I like to say is, uh, I'm passionate about this city and yes, I, I go over the top because I want things to change. And you know, the thing that I see that you got a person who's like running dictatorship, tis where no way. And I don't, you know, I don't care what he says to me. I will not let him pull me out of character, but I'm, I'm, these citizens, they pay taxes. They're citizens here in this town and they deserve better. And with a leader like that, they'll never get better. When you get, when you spending eight hundred thousand dollars on pumps, COVID happened. When you get, when you spending $800,000 on pumps, COVID happened, and it, it's a curse and a blessing. But this city had $2 million in some odd dollars that we could have done, paved some roads. We could have done a lot of, tore down some houses. We could have done a lot. He always talk about what could have been done. We got a code enforcer who's not effective. We got people in this city that are not effective. People are moving away from here because it's so down, they can't get folks to enforce the law on things. That's why people, people wanna be in hell. It's some nice spots. If you clear off the lots, folks will move back home. But they don't wanna move back home dealing with what we dealing with. You got pumps. We can be just like Jackson, Mississippi with a water crisis. We got, we pay, we are spending money every month on pumps. He said it would happen before he got here. Well, when you got here, you said the buck stopped with you. You shouldn't start fixing these problems. It takes probably $20,000 to fix two pumps. You could have fixed a pump each month, each week. You did not do that. You have, you have, you have had a water manager that had not passed any test. You've done the same thing over and over. You fired a water manager who had gave us a plan to start cleaning the pumps. You had a bad conversation with him. You fired him. Ben Zing Carter had gave us a plan on how to fix these pumps and what to do. You didn't like the plan. You got rid of him. Every time something come through, you blame the city council. He says that we don't have a day-to-day operation with this gas bill. We don't have a day-to-day operation. When it gets up high, y'all need to do something. Y'all need to do something, and we do it. So tha- that's all I gotta say.
Frank, before you close out, I wanna correct one thing for record. The new code of enforcement officer had not been here but a, a part of the month. You said the code of enforcement not doing anything. I'm saying the new code of enforcement.
The formal code enforcement we had.
And, uh, for the record, Mr. Turner, I, I talked to Mr. Turner today. Uh, he was going to lay out before you, the, you all have been requesting, he's giving it to you all off the record, but the public, you all never addressed it. Uh, when the mayor declared emergency in 2021, which was not legal, only the governor could declare emergency. His suspending that he gave you all the list for was $531,000, and the expenditures have not approved by the council. Mr. Turner has a list of all those expenditures. Uh, the mayor spent those without the city council approval. Uh, the, the emergency that was declared was, uh, relating to a, uh, the, the strong winds that happened Easter of 2020. But the expenditures that Mr. Turner gave you all was $531,000, I believe. It was in 2021. The governor had not declared emergency. What I'd said to the mayor, sent emails and et cetera, related to is that the mayor cannot declare emergency. Only the governor can do so. And when the governor class one, it gonna be for 120 days. Uh, but that $531,000 expenditures, there are many things in there that, uh, uh, Mr. Turner wanted to lay out to you all. But if y'all gonna have a special call meeting next Tuesday about finances, that y'all can discuss all that.